Thanks to everyone.
The next item on the agenda is the strategic plan core team meeting.
Yep, so the last time we met with you on this topic was in November, I believe, when we had Casey dialing in remotely, walking through the process of strategic planning and what Studer's involvement would look like. And one of the things that came up at that meeting was the conversation of the core planning team. You all, I think last week, saw the roster before you for approval. And we start tomorrow. And so we're really excited for that conversation, which is more going to be a get-to-know-you, rules-of-sandbox, all that kind of stuff that's going to be happening tomorrow. And then they will see the presentation that you all saw with Studer here. They'll have a revised version of that. And then we also have our engagement with Braver Angels to practice some skills of how divergent perspectives can be in the same space and move towards mutual outcomes. So really excited for that. One of the conversation pieces that came up in November was the notion of the meetings being open meetings or like closed work meetings. And through the discussion that I went and rewatched back, I think there was great questions asked as to that process. And I know this is an ad hoc committee. It's not like a traditional structured board committee like policy, for example. And in that conversation with the board, I believe the last, I think the conversations went from what is the practice that you see? I think the question was asked of me and asked of Casey, and I think you all and many of you weighed in on that conversation. And more than not, Casey shared that this was something that was done as more of a management work meeting, if you will, not like a public board meeting. And there was a specific district discussed as well that I inquired about as to their process. And their process was open, and it was open because the entire board participated on that core planning team. So it was a quorum, and so they had to have a public meeting. I have not been a part of the core team being a public, and I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm just saying that's not been my experience. But nonetheless, I think the closing comment that really resonated with me and was a director that stated kind of like the fluidity of the conversations of the core planning team. And, you know, if there's a member from our community that was observing or watching the core planning team and took that in, you know, the first hour discussion and went and posted all over social media, and then an hour later through more discussion and debate within the team, that outcome or that decision was changed to be something completely different. All that false information is now hanging out there in the public space. And the debate will then kind of go back to, well, no, that's not what was said, and you all are not being, you know, genuine, and you're lying, or you're changing data and all that kind of stuff. So it's a very fluid process, is what I'm saying. And I thought that point was very well taken by that board director. I did check with our attorneys on this as well. And our attorney has reviewed our policies and our practices and has determined that this is an ad hoc committee. It's not subject to open meeting law. It's not required that they are open. And also, our attorney noted one of the clauses in policy 213 about the distinction of school board committees versus ad hoc committees. And noting that three board members are also attending this, which is fine. It doesn't make quorum, so that doesn't subject it to open meeting law. And those three board members happen to be the executive board. But this ad hoc committee is not a committee that's operating as an executive board committee. It's an ad hoc work group for synthesizing information gained through multiple engagement sessions with the community. So there's no legal concern that three exec members are there, and it does not constitute it to come to be an executive board meeting. So my plan, based on what I observed, the conversation to go to, because it landed in a direction of moving forward with the cadence of superintendent reports, board reports, coming back, you know, whether it's study session or the board, regular board business meetings, that's how that would, the continued conversation would be briefed with the board, the broader board and community, as well as our public-facing website, similar to what we've done with our negotiations. Giving the core planning team the autonomy to hash things out and work through whatever they need to work through and not be wedded to something that was said. And at one point in time, that would eventually change, but then maybe gets broadcast in a different light. So I wanted to just gauge the board, if what your desire was. That was my interpretation, walking away from that meeting. And just wanted to see if there's any differing of perspective or direction from the board.
I just wanted to add some content to the conversation. I had the opportunity to attend the MSBA conference. I know there's, Jess was there and Dr. Mail, and Dr. Thomas was there. One of the workshops that I attended was stakeholder engagement, the key to successful goal-setting, which was put on by MSBA. MSBA, as you know, puts on, does strategic planning across our state, where Studer is more of a national organization. And I spoke with Gail Gilman at the MSBA conference, as well as I followed up with her in a phone conversation. And she was adamant that these meetings be open to the public and that they would be a violation of open meeting law because we are a public institution. So appreciate you checking with our attorney. I, you know, I think some of the things that really resonated with me, and Gail did do the work with the Jordan district as well. One of the things that resonated with me is that, you know, this is our community's plan. It is, the strategic plan is to get as much engagement from our community as possible, which I think if I, I went back and I watched the November 27th study session, and I was, you know, pretty adamant in believing that the more we can get engagement from our community, the more we can get support from our community, the better the plan that we're going to have. So I guess I'm a little torn because I'm listening to what MSBA is saying, and they know Minnesota law. And I just wanted to state that because I don't believe in closed meetings. I believe in transparency with our community, and I don't think we have anything to hide. I think the more open we can be our community, the better in this process. And I really, truly don't believe you're going to have people breaking down the doors and causing problems. In fact, one of the things that MSBA Gilman said is that it's actually the chair's job in these meetings to control the meeting, if it does get out of control. That would be the chair's role. She also said it doesn't matter whether you have two board members there, three, or seven. And typically, in the strategic planning that she does have, there are seven board members all involved in the process. So going back to the November study session, November 27th study session, Chair Crosby at the time said that the board would determine how many members were a part of this, and I don't believe that ever happened. And so I was disappointed in that part of the process. I'm disappointed that these meetings are going to be closed to the public because I don't feel like we're starting off on the right foot as far as engaging with our community, engaging with our board members, to come up with, engaging with all the board members. So I'm just going to leave it at that.
So thank you for sharing all that. It's good perspective to have. I want to be really clear, because I think you touched on it too, Dr. Thomas. Our board is going to be very involved in this work. Everything comes through the board and goes back and comes, we have many, many touch points where we're very publicly involved. I just really felt the need to touch on that. And in terms of the board determining who's on the strategic core team, we did. We approved the roster.
But we did not, as a board, determine if there was going to be three, four, five, six, or seven, one or two. And that was what we talked about in the November 27th session.
We did. We approved the roster. That was board work that was done publicly.
Well, just like what's in policy 213, the committees, I do plan on attending as an observer, which I have every right to do. So it doesn't matter if we have three board members attending the core planning meeting and working on it. If you say, I'm going to, like I said, I plan to attend them as an observer, and I have every right per policy 213, like you said, so. And you said it as well at the November 27th meeting.
Well, I have no problem with these meetings being open. They have work to do. The stratcom committee has some work to do, and I want to make sure that they're given the flexibility to do that, that they can speak openly and work openly. We also have the listening session, well, they're not labeled listening sessions. Would you call them listening sessions?
The community engagement sessions.
Yeah.
They're all open.
Thank you.
Those are all.
Right. In your first statement, you have no problem with it being open or closed?
The stratcom meetings, the stratcom committee meetings. I have no problem with them being open. And it is, it is our district's strategic plan. But my, not a caveat, I guess, but I just, I want to make sure that, that committee feels free to, they've got work to do. I mean, these are people that we approved, that we think make up a good representation of our community. They have work to do, and I want them to feel free and open to do that work. But I have, I personally have no problem with them being open. And, and again, there are, in addition to, there are the community sessions that are at different times of day, some at night, you know, to give even more opportunity for our community to engage, so.
Well, yeah, and I, a big point there is the core planning team is the one, those are the folks who will be ruling officially to synthesize the data, right? There is no community engagement there. That's not a community engagement opportunity. The community's involvement, which I would say is the majority of the work, is at these community cafes. It's going to be absolutely critical, and we're trying to blast that in so many different ways to get folks to come out to these cafes because that's where the ideation comes out and comes into play. That's where the voices of our community come to the table. And we have a model of engagement that allows for rotation of perspectives, so we don't just have a group think that kind of travels together. We break up folks to kind of cross-pollinate thinking, discussion points. That information is then, in partnership with Dr. Zumbusch and Studer, it gets synthesized, synthesized with the core planning team in making meaning of what did we just get from the community, right? And then, once that work is all kind of done, and we say, okay, here's, here are the big buckets that have emerged, here are the types of things that are starting to fill the buckets, now we want to go back out to our community and say, did we hear you correctly? And did we miss something? Do we, do we need to enhance something? Or are you going to validate, yep, you hit it out of the ballpark on this? That's exactly what we're thinking. That conversation, again, is a big lift for the community. That's the engagement, the active participation of our community. Then it goes, and that's not just the big ones. These are, you know, talking with Sam, or PTCs, or whatever it might be. I mean, I've talked with parents who said, hey, if we do, you know, a small listening session at my house, could you have some folks come out, you know, a small group of 10? We'll find any way that we can, you know, engage, you know, within reason and our bandwidth to make sure we're bringing these perspectives forward. There'll be the survey aspect. And just for the board, I heard feedback around our survey protocols. And so know that Marcus and team and Dr. Zumbusch are exploring methodologies that we can minimize to the greatest extent possible ballot stuffing. Can I say that? So, so, so we can get unique features or surveys to our respective families and stakeholders. Then all that gets brought back to the core planning team again, and they're synthesizing the work that's been done to bucket, bracket, thematic, you know, all that kind of stuff. And then to take it back now to the senior team to say, okay, given these iterations, and now your purview as a senior cabinet on the folks responsible for these big buckets of work and things that we filled it with, does this make sense? Is this doable? You know, those kind of things. We are also, we, senior cabinet, is also sitting in the core planning team meetings as content support. And, you know, if there's a question that comes up, you know, at a table group around, you know, curriculum, Dan's available to ask questions, but he's not going to guide the process. He might come in, answer the questions, pull back out. So I wanted to just be clear, engagement with our community won't happen at the core planning team.
Right. Well, Dr. Thomas, it's very similar to what happens at all our other meetings, whether it's curriculum or policy or.
I'm just, I'm just going on to something that Director Olstead said, because I don't want the community to hear that and say, oh, I thought we were missing out on engagement.
Right.
No, that's the community-facing meetings is where they're engaging.
And what Gail is saying is that they're all open. So the core planning and, just like our other committees are open to the public.
So the MSBA already said it's okay if this, if the initial one is closed, and I agree 100% with Dr. Thomas.
MSBA did not say that.
Actually, they did in writing.
What's that?
Didn't we get an email from the MSBA?
No, no, they're, no, our, no, no, our, our, yeah, Terry Morrow talked about, yeah, so Terry, MSB, is that MSBA?
Is it MSBA?
Terry Morrow, no, Terry Morrow and our own general counsel are both saying the same thing.
Right.
And it's different than Gail Gilman, who's in charge of strategic planning. So I just want to be clear.
Who isn't their attorney? Right? Is Gail an attorney? Is there a attorney?
No, no. Gail was just doing the.
Okay. She's facilitating.
Engagement one, yes. And I'm not sure she knew that a quorum wasn't going to be present in a few other.
Oh, I was very clear with her when I talked to her.
Mary. The bottom line is, is that, I, I see, the thing is, is that with the closed meeting, we do allow people to talk more openly, and you don't want people coming in and out of that because the aggregation of what that group determines then comes out. So there isn't a lot of confusion. It remains very streamlined, and that is what's shared. That isn't, that isn't in cement. That is just what's shared. And then the community gets engaged, and the community can come back with something totally different in some of these community engagement, which is fine. But the initial, and I, again, our previous meetings in this area were closed, as Enrique stated when he was here before.
Yeah, I actually checked on that. So when was the last strategic plan done?
Okay, so the previous meetings where we had the community engaged to do things like the referendum planning, et cetera, that was closed.
I was referring to when the last strategic plan was done, and my understanding is that they were open. And all board members had to take two full days off of work and be part of it.
That was not really, that was a one- or two-hour meeting the day after Halloween in which they pretty much brought some key people together in the high school and then asked for feedback on the existing strategic plan. And that's what that was.
That was the refresh?
That was the refresh. That was, that was.
I'm talking like pre-U 2009 time period. So it wasn't during, or three or something. It was during Westerhouse's time, so.
Oh, that was, that was pre-2009, I think.
Well, can I speak for a second? Yeah, yes. Since I'm apparently attending this planning, starting tomorrow. I do not think I was here in that November 27th meeting. I got to go back and double-check, but I don't think I was here. I would ask if this is different information that MSBA Gail Gilman gave us, which I know she's a consultant for MSBA, which we do lean on at times. It's different than what Studer says, but I know we're using Studer. I think it was financially prudent of us to do such a thing. I would like to, if we're going to talk about it, let's talk about it. We're the board, we can, and I know we're reopening it, but the end of the day, if the board, I understand the perception that someone's going to be out in the audience and broadcast something, but we can't control everybody's voices and how they behave in social media. We know that. And how we behave anywhere when we leave a meeting. I would like to consider, I mean, what's the downside besides that to having it open, given the information that I'm now hearing from Gail Gilman, who, I mean, we do lean on MSBA. We, do we pay them money every year?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, that's part of your board budget.
Yeah, when we talked about board budget. So I know I'm upsetting the, whatever, but like this is not the big deal.
You're not upsetting Apple Card. I'm just walking out of that November meeting, and I don't want to walk out with an understanding of one thing if the board has a desire for something else, which is why I wanted to bring it back to the board for your perspectives on what direction would you want to go. And I'm sharing what I checked in with in terms of legal counsel with MSBA and our general counsel of what's required legally and what's, and what can happen.
What can happen.
Okay, so two, two different outcomes. So if the board was legally obligated, I wouldn't have even come back here for a conversation, okay, based upon counsel from MSBA and ours. If the board desires something, then I would want to know that because the space that we're in, and let's just, I mean, if this were going to be a public from day one, there's a lot of get-up-and-go, walking around, we got flip charts, and so folks need to know if, if this is an open process, you're literally going to be the smallest fly in that space because we might need you to move into a whole separate area for a while so that we can commandeer this area so that we can spread out and have, you know, parent chairs and all that kind of conversation. And, yeah, so, so that's why I'm bringing it back to the board.
And Studer highly recommended it stay closed to allow people to have the biggest, the most freedom and flexibility to speak their hearts and minds without having it, you know, without having it misinterpreted or, and also engaging the public so that the public that was on that committee to be able to, you know, basically feel comfortable doing that.
And one of the things too, that I know we talked about as we planned with Braver Angels in just kind of like, what are the rules of engagement? One of the, one of the takeaway or protocols that we'll have in place is, at the conclusion of our meetings, we will agree what's for public consumption and what's not. And I will tell you, and I will go the direction, you know, that you all suggest, if this is an open meeting, I would like to change parameters around expectations for observers, like that they're not tweeting out whatever it is they're doing, you know, like do not take things from this conversation outside of what we as a working body agree to do. And, you know, in this day and age where everything is recorded, someone's videotaping, you know, it just, it just sets a bad tone, you know? And I, I think that's, those are parameters that if that's the direction the board wants to go, I would ask for support to laying down the law of the land so that we can mitigate any feeling of being surveilled and being able to be in my whole person.
Well, yeah, taking pictures. And by the way, though, we would all, as a board, have to agree to that behavior as well.
Yeah.
And if we, if we agree and then we don't do it, then. I think we've had issues in the community where they haven't, and that's, I think, one of the concerns, and that's some of the concerns of some of the people who want to be in that and be in this, and we're very grateful for their time. But the other thing is, is I want to add that as board members, we're not there to speak.
Correct.
We're there to observe. This isn't about us. It's never been about us or even the observers. It's about getting honest feedback and a safe place for people to speak. And that's the thing that concerns me because I heard that very clearly from the Braver Angels stuff that I went to, and I heard that very clearly from Studer on that process. And that's the thing that we need to make sure is sanct, sanct, go sanct. And we can't control that. And that also, in my estimation, with the activities that Braver Angels does, doing that in the public eye and having people share what's in their heart, isn't easy to do it when you've got a large people watching you.
I just said I have a hard time believing you're going to have a large people watching, to be honest with you.
I would, I would disagree. I don't, I don't think that's a problem.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to challenge that a little bit, not because, if you feel strongly enough, you will, you will share on the things that matter most to you. What this will discourage by opening, and let me start by saying, the bulk of this work is public. Like the massive bulk of this work is public. How many meetings is it? Like four? It's four.
There's four or five that are 48 hours apiece, so.
Well, the reason that they're heavy and long is because you're getting this deep, almost personal ideation from people being involved and being super vulnerable, which is a lot harder to do in a public space, especially if, for example, Amy Crosby comes up with an idea to shut down Glendale Elementary because, you know, whatever, and everybody else thinks it's a good idea, and it ends up moving forward, and the people at Glendale Elementary are really mad, you know? And I'm not, that's not going to happen, that's not a scenario, but I'm saying those are, those are the conversations that will be had. What's the value of min caps? What's the value of? It would be worse if somebody shared that truth and it got out, but it wasn't the, it wasn't the consensus of the group. Also, I want to make, because that's part of the issue here, is if somebody throws that out in the meeting and it, everyone like talks about it, but let's say somebody's texting at that time, or somebody grabs that and comes in at that time and hears that and then leaves, then we've just destroyed the ability for that group to work because then, then the next meeting, everyone's going to be afraid to even throw anything out.
Are we giving this credit?
That's why, that's why Studer says it's best if these, in these meetings with this small. And then reading MSBA's flyer about what they offer, the bulk of their work that they're talking about, that's work we're doing. This is additional, management, deep dive.
She was very clear. I mean, I asked her, I went to her seminar specifically to learn more about how, why, what the process is all about, how they do it. One of the best things they said is, go meet with your critics. And so I guess, I guess my question is, what I'm hearing from you, Chair Franz, is that you have less trust in our community than maybe that somebody like Jordan has in theirs, where they were, it was open to the community, and they were engaging with their community on all their different, different meetings. So I, I find it quite offensive, actually, to not consider that these meetings wouldn't be open. And I'm not just saying that from a personal standpoint.
Jordan's process is different than ours. And that's what you're leaving out of this. They also had a full board. We do not.
It doesn't matter.
The board was supposed to be actively involved, and we don't want to be.
You don't want the full board to be actively involved? Is that what you just said?
No, no. The board members attending these meetings are not supposed to be necessarily actively involved. We're there to listen. That's pretty much it. And that's the way we should be with all of our meetings, for the most part, all of our committee meetings, because that's why we have the public come in. When we talk, we can intimidate, we can do a lot of stuff to people. That's not the intention. We're there to be there and hear them speak firsthand. We're not there to speak. That's, that's, that's part of the role of the public engagement in the committees, and that's the role here.
We have, we have open committees in our community. New open committees.
Director, so what I'm hearing from you is you don't trust this process. That's what I'm actually hearing.
This is, this is a brand-new process, and I'm just saying, let's try to be engaged as we can with our community, and it's completely embarrassing to not think that we can't trust our community to come into your. I, I've been to the Braver Angels workshop. I thought it was fantastic. I hope we have the same facilitator that we had when I was there. I think it personally would be great for our community to see the Braver Angels process because it's an amazing process of how do we get along with each other and see each other's viewpoints and respect each other's viewpoints.
Well, I would say, you just stated something that is embarrassing. I don't think it's embarrassing. I think that we're getting two different points of view from two different consulting groups. That's what I would say. So I, there's nothing embarrassing about it in my world. In my world, it's like, well, we're getting opinions. This one from Gail Gilman came in later. We weren't all privy to that information. We can lean on legal, but at the end of the day, I would, I would not love to use the word, I don't think it's embarrassing. I think it's prudent of us to make, to have this conversation.
Well, I think you can follow. I think.
I think, I think you, you can follow your, where your values are by where you're spending your time, right, as they say. And as I've kind of walked through just my lived experiences doing these, no disrespect to the core planning team, that's 20% of the work. Our timeline, if you look at our timeline, we have 10 scheduled publicly facing engagement sessions with our community. We've got five core planning teams to make sense of what, or make meaning of what we learned from those 10 sessions. Our value is showing the work of our community that we're looking for is two to one than the process work of the core planning team. So, the value's already there. I want to be very clear. I highly value our community, want community input, which is why we have the structure that we have. And that's the formal. There's going to be tons of informals that are going to be something Patrick might do at Jeffers Pond just because, you know, it's my PTC, I'm going to do this. And we'll have that as a data point. There'll be a QR code at a concert, whatever. That's not scheduled. So, the core planning team, and I'm, again, I'm, I've not experienced that to be public. And I'm not going, I can't weigh in because I've never done that publicly. And I, I can just tell you, those are real sleeve-rolled-up, making-meaning kind of, is that, you know, is that what you're saying, Tammy? I don't know if I heard that from, from this data point from the community, and we kind of go back and forth and whatever, you know? So, we have these discussions, but, and Studer said too, they've done it both publicly and they've done it in closed, more so closed than they have public. MSBA, Gail, talks about it being public. And I'm not going to wed it to a structure. That's just their model, right?
She said she's never, she said she would, she would never encourage it to be...
Yeah, that's their model. That's, yeah, I'm not, yeah, that's their model. So, and I'm not putting valuation on that. Both are going to yield outcomes that are heavily driven by the community. If we had one-and-done session like the refresh and that was it, yeah, I would say, hey, we're going to get beat up on this. We're not, that's not who we are. That's not what we've proposed. So, to not belabor this, because we had a long discussion in November, I'm just asking, what's the will of the board? Do you, I mean, what's the will of the board?
So, I haven't said anything on this topic. I think, when I think back to our, our study session in November, we all had comments. And, you know, maybe the one thing that was missing is that we didn't vote on it to get an actual will of the board. A little bit challenging that we're doing this tonight, the night before we're starting, when we've, we've had some time to revisit and talk. But here we are tonight, and when I think about, you know, from the beginning conversations with Studer, we listened to all of the different, you know, pros and cons, and I, I truly believe either way we go, there's going to be pros and cons. There will be, you know, something that somebody could say is maybe not a positive aspect of it, could, could be done different or, or whatever. For me, when I think about how that study session went, I felt like we had the will of the board to be closed. Now, again, we did not take a vote, and so, here we are today. I too, and I'm not opposed to it being open. What I do is I listen, and then it's like, okay, what, what are the people who've been through it? What are, you know, Studer's recommendations, all of the things? And I'm open to what's decided. I feel like, again, we did not take a vote in November, and so, are, what is the best course of action for tonight that we take a, because to take a vote, to take a thumbs up? I'm not, I'm not sure, but how do we move forward so that we aren't spending?
Sure.
Yeah, I, you know?
What's the technicality, too? I mean, if, if we were going to do it closed, what's the notice?
It already is, notice is closed. No, we already noticed it's closed because the board... So, I'm, I'm a little bit challenged that we're here tonight, the day before. And, and, you know, it's, the will of the board is important. I, I felt like we had it. And so, if we didn't have it, what do we do tonight to have it?
I just want to offer just a couple historical perspective. And memory might not be serving me the best, but I do recall specifically the Dr. Westerhouse version, and that was a multiple-day event, and that was closed. That is my recollection. It was a group that was chosen to represent a very diverse representation and approximately 40 members of our community and staff.
And all board members, though, right?
I don't recall all board members being present.
I was, I was told all board members, from the person who was on the committee.
That's not my recollection, but I, it's 20, it's over 20 years ago now, I think. The, I do not recall the specifics when we did it with Dennis Cheese Brown and Teamworks, but I do recall it, I do recall it being in this space, this room, and I do recall that it didn't feel, it felt like, my recollection is, and that was over 10 years ago, that everybody who was in attendance was a known person who had been pre-arranged with a name tented on. The refresh, I recall, was over 100 people that had the opportunity to come and give their input around.
That was the one-and-done at the high school.
That was the 2018 one-and-done. That's my recollection of the last three strategic planning processes that I've been a part of. The other piece I want to piggyback on what Director Bullion was just saying, my recollection, we can go back and review what was said on November 27th, but I too thought that one of, and I offer this as an idea because we are sitting here tonight, and this is tomorrow night, and I have some concerns about the ability to, for that space to accommodate with the group that we have invited to, I recall a conversation, and maybe I imagined this, and I apologize if I did, that it was something along the lines of, let's get from the group their sentiment around this.
Yes, I do remember that.
The group that assembles to understand their level of comfortability with being broadcast or the potential to be open, let's start closed. That's what I'm kind of recalling of the conversation.
A suggestion around that, or wondering what was made that night in November.
Well, and after the first session with Braver Angels and the initial introduction to see what the comfort level from the group that was meeting after that would be. Yes, I do remember that. I don't remember that being a decision, but I remember that being a suggestion.
That was, that was mentioned. I rewatched that whole hour of this. This conversation was an hour, so...
And I rewatched that too, and to your question, Director Bullion. So, I walked out of that meeting and was even validated by rewatching that meeting that through the conversation, there was a level of acquiesce to this being closed, okay? That's based upon the feedback points, all that kind of stuff. And why I brought this back is wanting to make sure, because we didn't have a formal action. And I don't want to get sideways and make an assumption about something that's very near and dear to the core work of what we will do, which is why I brought this back, which is why I sought perspective from a legal standpoint. Because, like I said, if it was legalese...
Can you share that with us, by the way, just from, can you share that with us?
Yeah, yeah. So, I, I can share that. And so, so because there's no legal requirement, then I really didn't want to just go off and assume, you know? Like, I, I knew legally we're good, like, we could have gone down that direction, but we never formally said, "Michael, do it this way," right? And so, I think, to Dan's point, seeing that we're the day before, it would make sense to bring this conversation to the core planning team. And gauge, you know, if, if, if they're like, yeah, let's, let's make this happen in public, and that's the will of that group, and that aligns to what you would want, then, then make that happen. If they're like, well, no, we really want to roll up our sleeves, kind of go at it when we need to go at it without being judged or taken out of context or whatever, and we think having, you know, an observer role would be intimidating, then that's, that's feedback, that's important. It empowers the group to kind of make some key decisions that will help them work to their best.
And also might help them build their parameters.
And build parameters and build trust.
No, I'm comfortable with that.
So, can I ask for acceptance by negation? Is there anyone who's not supportive of tomorrow being closed to open up this conversation for the team to kind of decide what they want to do moving forward after tomorrow?
Sorry, that was...
Does anyone object to tomorrow's core planning team meeting being closed to them to do their get-to-know-you, level-setting and all that, and come to a level of consensus of, we feel we'll be a better working group if we do this on our own? Or we're supportive of doing this, having an observer role? They, they would decide?
I'm going to object, just because, like I said, I, based on what I heard from Gail Gilman, and I don't have to repeat what I just, what I said before, but I do object. I think they should be open to create transparency.
So, tomorrow's meeting, I'm going to run as a closed meeting, and we'll get...
Can you also clarify one thing? When you say you're running it as a closed meeting, legally, we can only close a meeting for like four things. Negotiations...
If, if, if that committee was subject to open meeting law, of which our attorneys from the MSBA and our general counsel are saying it is not because it's an ad hoc committee, it's not subject to those guidelines.
If you can just send that out, I would, I would like to see that. I think it'd be helpful for the whole board to see that.
I will, I will send it to the board here in just a few months.
Okay.
You've got to be careful. You can only send Terra Moros.
What's that?
You can be, it's Terry Moros.
Oh.
Yeah. You've got to be careful about...
Okay.
But that's, I think you can send it if it's, if we had asked for...
I, I will, I will send, I will send what I can from the legal aspect of this.
Terry Moros, yeah, and then, because whatever conversation that you had is attorney-client privilege by default. And if you violate that, you've got a set of precedents that would not be favorable to the district.
I, I will get you the legal advisement that I can share with you all.
Thank you.
That's it, sorry. I think we're on to policy.
I think, yeah, okay. We are on to policy. So, we have a lot to review, and it's after nine, so I just want to make sure we're using our time wisely here. So, we have 20 policies here. And unfortunately Enrique is not with us, Director Vales was, so, who is also a member of the policy committee. So, unfortunately, Director Bullion, who are primary voice for any comments or concerns that happened at the, at the meeting. But I'm not quite sure how you guys want to take these. Do you want to take these one at a time? Do you want to go to the ones that are most, you're most interested in? How would you like to do this?
I personally would like to go through them one by one. I have a few comments on almost every one, but not everyone, like, but I do have questions because I did not attend the policy meeting, and I haven't seen any recap or anything. I would like to go through one by one, just to understand. There's quite a few changes in here, in these policies.
So, I'm going to direct to Director Herman and have you go over the changes in the policies. And Director Bullion, if you could add any feedback from the policy committee.
So, starting with policy 406, there were some changes made based off of the legal recommendations and MSBA policy additions that were made based off of review from only the administrators that work with them closely, but also some feedback from the policy advisory committee. Did track changes in either pink or green? Any of the color changes, they don't signify anything. It's just depending on who's in the Google Doc that makes them at the time. So, if it's pink, or it's green, or it's purple, it's blue, it's just, it's just all tracked changes. There's no specific meaning behind the different colors.
By the way, for me, it looked like an Easter egg hunt, but I'm good with that.
That was one of my first questions, so thank you for saying that.
I just have one question on overall, very understandable, under N as in Nancy. It changed from, in accordance with Minnesota State Statute 269E.45 to MDE screening guidelines? I'm just curious, why would, why would it change from following the what's in law versus MDE screening?
Is Kristi here? Kristi, do you recall that change?
Like, I'm assuming the screening guidelines would follow the law, but I'm just curious why we would just follow the statute versus the guidelines. I'm not recalling at the moment.
I was in the first reading of that. You changed it because the Minnesota statute actually just refers to the MDE screening guidelines. It doesn't actually state that. It doesn't have the screening guidelines in there, so that's, that was supposed to be for clarification and to send people directly to the source. I was in the first review, I wasn't in the second review. I'm not sure if I kept right up against the question, too.
Maybe you could just write Minnesota State Statute section and MDE screening guidelines. That way you know where the law is. Because I, personally, I like to see the law in here because then I know exactly how to go look it up and know exactly how to read it.
I believe this was all just MSBA recommendations.
So was it?
So, Director Atkinson, your recommendation is in accordance with MDE screening guidelines per Minnesota Statute Section 260E.15.
That would be a suggestion that I would, I'd like, just because I...
Any concerns of that from the rest of the board?
I think that's fine.
Okay, I will need that edit. Any other questions or recommendations for this policy?
On E, it says means twice in a row.
Which, which, which E?
Two E.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that word, please?
Two E. It, it says means twice in a row.
Thank you. Any other edits or questions for policy 406? Going to the next policy, 409. Again, very limited changes here, adding references.
I have another, I'm sorry, I just, I was remembering something. One of the reasons why the policy committee also took the statute out of the chapter is because, the thing is because it's already mentioned below, and I think you also brought that up in the first reading in December.
Okay.
So, we were mentioning the statute twice, and that was, that was a requirement from the policy committee to not have to have that stuff changed in context.
Well, it is also mentioned above there, under N, it's also mentioned, so...
That was for consistency, so if it got missed again. And I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just remembering now that I'm looking through it, and it was a month ago.
I can review that, bring it back. So, any changes or questions for 409? Okay, moving on to 409.9 slash... Okay, moving on to 409.9 slash 524. Any questions or edits for this one?
The general statement of policy where it lists the technology that's provided to all the groups, should the board be under there as well? Well, that's a good one. For given devices.
Any concerns with adding that from the rest of the board?
Hmm, okay. Good.
No, no, it's okay, I don't want it to speak up just. Another one, and now I can't remember. I have something under seven. So under unacceptable uses, number seven.
Personal photos.
So yes, it's under that. I'm just trying to remember as I was reading all these, why, the context of this. I have notes, but I'm just trying to understand this, to make sure I'm understanding the context of it. So, says users will not use district electronic technologies to access, review, upload, download, store, print, post, receive, transmit, or distribute. And it says in here, personal photos, files, or music not related to educational purposes for any extended length of time. And my only question on that, and I'm going to reference this into another policy that we're going to talk about later called religion. But when it refers to music. So maybe, I was going to say, maybe I'll wait to talk about this. Basically, there was a Supreme Court case recently that is Kennedy versus Bremerton, the Coach Kennedy case. And it's, it was done by First Liberty, it was, it was, First Liberty Institute is the one who, I don't know, was in charge of the Supreme Court case. And basically what it did, this case, it's called the Coach Kennedy case, is it gives a district or a public employee the right for free expression of religion, which is protected under the First Amendment. And this case actually overrode the Lemon versus Kurtzman case, which was the standard, like separation of church and state case. And so we're going, we can talk about this more when we get to the religion. But my understanding of this case is that if a teacher would like to play religious music, Christmas music, before her class comes in, that she has every, she or he has every right to do that under this new Supreme Court ruling of the Kennedy versus Bremerton High School Supreme Court ruling. So my question, that's where, when I saw music, I'm, and it says not related to educational purposes for any period, periods, for any extended purpose length of time.
So my understanding of that case, and I can, I can double check with legal on that. My understanding of that case is that was specifically during a break time that the individual was, was praying, when they was not performing duties, not supervising children, not on, on the case. And so, very, very different than using district electronic technologies to do that. If individuals using their own technologies, I could see that, that being a different standard there. But I can definitely double check with legal on that.
Yeah, and I, I actually went to, I attended a little presentation, but from First Liberty, and so I have some contacts here, two of you want to have their contacts. But my understanding is that because of this case, it overrode the Lemon versus Kurtzman case. And now people have more rights under the First Amendment than they've ever had in the past. And that's where that comes in as an employee.
I'll definitely get further context on that, because I think it's, it's definitely a, a bigger, more in-depth conversation.
Yeah, it is. And I noticed even on the, the religion policy that we're going to get to, it, that's where it becomes even more important, so.
But on this, just so I understand, this is, this is more about school device.
Correct. District technology.
So.
And personal use of something that doesn't belong to the person.
Correct.
Yeah.
So I would, I would. It's not about whether it's played or not. It's about being on the school.
Using a district device.
Personal photos, files, music not related to educational purpose for any extended length of time. So are you basically saying that?
Content.
Any, the music has to be owned by the district as part of like the.
No, this is under, users will not use a district, this is about doing that on a district device. That's what.
So an employee can't play Spotify on their, I'm just, I mean, I'm, you know.
Yeah, for an extended period of time to kids.
I don't know if they do or not. I, I don't know what the teachers do, so.
If it's not, if it's not aligned to curriculum. If it's aligned to curriculum, yeah, you can do, you can do that. So I guess in.
And what this law is saying is that you, a, a teacher could play Christmas music even on secular before her students come into class. On their own device versus.
We don't really know what the law actually said or did. I would prefer, if, if you are concerned about it, Director Herman, that you actually went and asked our legal counsel how to interpret Supreme Court decisions.
Yep, I have the note on here to, to check with legal. Is there any other questions or, or edits for this policy?
I have, that's the only one I have.
Okay. Here are the others, we'll go to, oh, see, 414. Again, a lot of this was changes from MSBA and legal counsel with all the different statutory changes since it's last been updated. But you'll see a lot of that reflected throughout the edits. And then the, the other generic changes that we've talked about already, adding legal references and any of the other generic changes we've, we've done as a policy committee.
I have a question under H. I'm assuming, and I'm assuming this, this follows all the new laws pertaining to non-exclusionary discipline.
Correct.
Correct. Okay.
And then, just to clarify, you're talking about two, two H, right?
Or H physical.
Speaking of H in general, yeah, it'd be two A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H. Yep, where it says actions are not, that are not reasonably moderate, include, I don't know, any of the following. Yeah, throwing, kicking, burning, biting, yeah.
Yes. There's quite a bit changes in this, and the vast majority of this is related to all those statutory changes you referenced. Any other questions or edits for this one? Okay. Moving on to 416. 416, it is the recommendation that we, to get rid of this policy. The reason for that is, with this policy in place, it actually adds liability to the district in order to make efficient decisions if there are instances of, of concerns with individuals being intoxicated on workforce. And there's a lot of already statutory obligations that we would have to follow that protect the district regardless. So it is our recommendation that we delete this policy. Questions or concerns with deleting it? Okay, moving on to 417, chemical use and abuse. So I'm just trying to pull it up here. Again, a lot of this has changed with recent statute changes. So you'll see quite a bit of changes throughout the policy related to that. And then the, the typical additions of legal references and cross-references that we've been doing throughout.
Emily, I have a question under definitions B. So we reference controlled substances. And then we go over and we list out what those controlled, controlled substances are. Sorry, I need to get water. And then under general use, statement of policy, we say use or possession of controlled substances. Let it be known that probably 20% of our kids are probably on controlled substances. And I, I don't want to get into personally what that is, what it looks like, but there are kids who take controlled substances. And so the one thing that, when you go over to policy 418 and 902, we list also what controlled, controlled substances are. But then we go to procedures and B, where we say employees who have a prescription from a physician for medical treatment with a controlled substance, that there's an exemption for an employee who has a prescription with a controlled substance. But we do not have anything in here that says a student may have a prescription with a controlled substance. So where does that, where is that taking into place? That there is a student that could have a prescription with a controlled substance? Because basically we're saying they can't be taking their controlled substances.
I'm sorry, Director Atkinson, I'm, I'm not following.
You're not following my logic? Okay, that's okay, I'll try again. Okay, so we talked about chemical use and abuse. And under B, definitions B, definitions B, under 417, definitions B, we list out controlled substances, right? ADHD meds are controlled substances, just to be real clear, okay? And then when we bounce over to policy, the next policy, 418 and 902, which is a drug-free workplace for our staff, or it says drug-free workplace, drug-free school, we also list out what a controlled substance is under definition. And then you keep going, and you go to general statement of policy, exceptions, procedures. Under procedures for B, employees.
So I'm sorry, are you under 418, or are you under 417 now?
Well, I'm, I'm, what I'm basically saying is, can we add the language from 418 where it says, employees who have a prescription from a physician? Is, do we need to put that in for a student? Like, students who have a prescription from a physician for medical treatment with a controlled substance? Should that be written into 417 as well?
I think five 16.
Protect a student who has.
I think 516 covers all of that concern. That specifically speaks to student medication? Is that, I think that gets to your concern.
Which would be all. 416 does.
Five 16. So under 516, it's a specific policy for student medication?
Oh, is it in here? Could I have that?
I don't know, it's not.
No, no, it's not.
We just, we just passed that through last time. It was just one that we just recently reviewed.
But does it say, like, like a student who has.
There's a, there's a whole process for if it's a controlled substance.
Okay, okay.
So that's under.
That's covered, you're saying.
That process is covered under 516 requirements J. Under that policy, it speaks to the process of administration of a drug or medication subscribed in the school. If it's a controlled substance, it speaks to that whole piece of it.
So do we need to reference, do we need to link the cross, cross-reference here, maybe? Because this, this policy, tell me.
Yeah, my only concern with that, Director Atkinson, is the 400s are employees.
Oh, it's all employees. Okay, see, we took the, the word staff off, and that's why it confused me, because it was chemical use and abuse of staff, and then we took that off.
Right, so the rationale on the policy committee and, and Chair Frans, I believe you're on for the first review of this, and Vice Chair Bowlen for the second. I believe the, the rationale for that was it was the redundancy around it, and just trying to clean it up. Because all of the other 400s, even though they're just staff, we don't say parenthetical staff. So in the efforts to try to clean up the policies and, and make them cleaner, we felt that was just a redundant thing to have on there, to say staff. Because if you look at all the other 400s, they don't, like, say parenthetical staff, parenthetical whatever else. So we tried to get rid of those. And the four, how they're grouped, is the 400s are personnel, the 500s are students.
Yeah, I'm clear on that, yeah, I'm very clear on that now. So, but I just, I guess I always like things real crystal clear. So the word staff to me, I personally like it, but whatever, I understand the logic behind it, so that's fine. Question under, sorry. Have a question. Oh, I have one more, but I, you can go ahead, because you might ask the same questions as me, so.
Definitions under D. Two parter. 417, under definitions.
Yep.
D, defining teacher. Do we need to list everybody out at the risk of leaving anything out? And at the risk of having to revise this, just to add it? Like, specialists is missing, for example, right? And then it's librarian.
Specialist in here.
It, well, and it says, like.
There's many positions that aren't going to be listed.
Right.
So my, yeah, so my point is, do we need to do this list? Can we cut it off as, as members of the instructional supervisory and period? Because, I mean, teacher in this policy is, is staff.
So it was just a redundancy kind of question. Recommendation because of statute, or if it's just MSB's recommendation because of something else?
Correct.
So I have that, that I'll double check on, right?
And I didn't know, thank you, and I didn't know if librarian should be media specialist? For sake of title.
Oh, yeah. I have a question under three, general statement of policy. And this is still in 417. So when it says the school district shall develop, implement, and evaluate comprehensive programs, we use that word, the school district, under, and, like, who is that, the school district? Like, typically, it's either the superintendent or designee, or it's the school board. But when we're saying the school district, who would that fall into? Whose responsibility would that fall into?
I think in that policy, it's intended to reference the school district as the employer.
Because then we also reference it down under employees. We say the school district, and then we crossed out superintendent or designee. So I'm just asking, who is, who is, who is the school district, like, for this policy? Who would that responsibility fall into?
I think it's the purview of administration, to make sure it's implemented. We're just saying it needs to be, we're not, we aren't saying who needs to do it, or. That's how I read it.
And I don't recall. Why it was changed in MSBA policy either. Would the board prefer specificity in that, to keep, move it back to the superintendent or assigned designee, or? Oh, I was just curious.
I remember our, us having conversations in policy committee regarding that, that we did discuss that. I don't recall actual discussion, but we did.
I think it was going back to the whole notion of, instead of constantly having to update policy to when it changes.
Also make it broad, so it could be designated. This one was early on in the, in the conversations. When you start mentioning titles and people and all that kind of stuff. Emily, in the very beginning, you had mentioned that you had, had to cross out your title, for instance, when it changed, or the title name when it changed, and just make it as generic, because it meant legally the same thing. But I don't know if MSBA said that it was legally the same thing, so.
So would the board like it to be more specific, to add back the superintendent or designee? Or are we comfortable with leaving it as the school district representing the employer?
Uncomfortable, because legally, this would hold water in court.
Uncomfortable without district. I mean, I don't care, I was just asking who it was. I mean, I'd rather know.
Any other questions or feedback for 417? Okay, moving on to 418. Questions on 418? I believe this is one of them that we had done quite a bit of edits on over the summer, so there wasn't as many edits here, except for adding the legal references and cross-references.
I, I'm going to ask you some questions, and maybe it's, so this is again an employee policy, but it also incorporates 902, that's why it is. Okay, I understand it now, I answered my own question, so. Because there's some student stuff in here, because that's, because it's a crossover.
A lot of these policies cross between some categories.
Yeah, I was confused by that, but now I got it figured out, so.
419. Any questions on 419 slash 902.1, to Director Atkinson's point? Again, I think this is one that we had just recently updated as well over the summer, so there's not significant amount of changes here. Again, I think this is one that we had just recently updated as well, over the summer, so there's not significant amount of changes here. 428, employees of social media?
My only question call-out is, under definitions, can we define employee? And I think the reason that I'm going to state this is because I think, um, in other parts, we define who the employee, or what an employee is. And I think there was been a question, you and I had had some dialogue, about are teachers on-call? Are they employees? Or are they?
Actually, had a discussion about that with the definition of contractors, and that one that was already updated. Yeah, that is.
So I think, I would like to see the employee defined, you know what I mean?
Is everyone, the whole of board, comfortable with having a definition for employee here? Okay, I'll work on that and bring that back to you next.
I have a question about that. Would it be, especially for long-term maintenance of these, would it be easier just to cross-reference the policy we discussed that does include, um, the full definition of employee, contractor, and all that? So that we have it in one place and use it consistently by default?
Thank you for the suggestion, I'll, I'll review the policies, see which one we can potentially cross-reference if available. Any other questions or edits for 428? All right. Moving on to 506 dot 1, bullying, prohibition. I said that wrong, sorry.
Prohibition, permission.
Did I say promotion?
Prohibition.
I'm sorry.
That's a different policy.
My apologies. Um, this is, this is a policy that went through some extensive edits over the summer as well, so you won't see as many edits here. Except for adding of the legal references and cross-references, adding of the legal guardian per the teaching and learning committee's recommendation, and then just some minor grammatical gramm, grammatic issues.
We, we got you.
Thank you. Any questions or edits for this policy?
I have a question. So, and I would just, I would just like a little context around this, because when we say, at the very beginning, we talk about the purpose, and then we go to, "The school district cannot monitor the activities of students at all times, and eliminate all incidents of bullying between students, particularly when students are not under the direct supervision of school personnel." The concern I have is the next statement that says, "However, to the extent such conduct affects the educational environment of the school district and the rights and welfare of its students, and it is within the control of the school district in its normal operation, the district intends to prevent bullying, and to take action to investigate, respond to, and remediate and discipline for those acts of bullying which have not been successfully prevented." My question is, is, how much of this happens outside of our school district? And then with language in this policy that basically says, if it happens off-premise, we say it under cyberbullying too, off-premises to the extent that it substantially and materially disrupts student learning or the school, the school environment. How much of this holds our district liable for, I mean, anything that happens from a cyberbullying standpoint? And from, from a small scale to a large scale? And I understand disrupts the learning environment, but I think anybody could argue that pick up any kid's cellphone, and you're going to find something that disrupts the learning environment.
That's a great question, Georgia Atkinson.
And from a legal standpoint.
Yeah, where the legal case law comes in, and this is where this language is coming from, statutorily, we are obligated to, um, to to address anything that creates substantial educational disruption. And so this, that's the language in there to allow us to, should the bullying get to the point that it's causing substantial educational disruption in the system, then we have the ability then to move forward with disciplinary action in, in order to to manage that situation. So that language is in court, or, um, in direct relationship to statute, and also case law, that if it does cause an educational disruption, it creates an nexus to the school district that we then have the obligation and authority to, to address.
Yeah, thank you for that explanation. I saw it in MSBA's policy too, while I don't necessarily agree that that's our district's responsibility. I, I saw it there too, so I appreciate you adding more context to that.
I think the key too, is the nexus. That, that's the operative word here. And if we, and if we can show that it has an origination from something that, like, if you and I got into it at school, and then I go out online and do something, well, it started, actually, we have the nexus and the ownership, so that we could take, take action. If you and I are just texting back and forth, and it has nothing to do with school context, there's a real, real little that we can have authority to do. Now, I will say, our administration likes to have the conversation and whatever, but we're very limited in what we can actually do. But we'll definitely try to help parents have the conversation about whatever might be exchanging, so it doesn't come into our school, you know?
Yeah, and I've.
And scenarios that start at home, out of our school, and find their way into our school.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or edits for this policy? Oh, sorry, MSBA policy here, so my numbers got thrown off a little bit. We are on 515. Protection, uh, protection and privacy of student records. We have some edits, it was updated over the, the summer with some of the changes that already happened during the legislative session, but there was additional recommendations from MSBA that we did include in here. Again, the colors don't mean anything in terms of priority or anything, that's just different people were in the, in the document making edits at the same time. One thing that we did move around and change, to that whole notion of trying to prevent the amount, amount of places we have to make edits and changes, but also making sure it's easy for our community members to know who to contact. We, we changed it to say, "The communications department contact," and then we only listed that contact once in the policy. So should that contact change? It's easy to change it to one spot versus multiple spots throughout, throughout. We do something similar with, like, the Title IX contact and things like that. So those were the major changes on 515. Any questions or edits for 515? Nope. Now, moving on to 520, I believe? I'm sorry, 515, MSBA policy, a lot of years. Any questions or edits on policy 520?
I have a question, under, um, student surveys conducted as part of U.S. Department of Education programs, so B. I guess a question came up in my mind, and maybe this is covered here, so please forgive me if I didn't find it. What if something is revealed in a survey that needs to be dealt with under mandatory reporting? Is there a way to find out who that student might, depending on? Do you follow me? Because we're, we're talking about, and maybe it's not under this specific question, maybe it's an overall question. But we're talking about, you know, the surveys, and that they're confidential, and you can't track who that survey, where that survey came from, but if, in a survey, something is said in a survey, or revealed in a survey, that would fall under mandatory reporting, is there a way to, or is that kind of an unfortunate gap?
We don't, if it's a confidential survey, we don't have, we, we can't trace that back to a certain student. You know, we can, we can, you know, if, if, if there was a concern that was expressed, and we know that this was the fourth grade, you know, cohort, we could address fourth grade, you know, in that school blanket, but we wouldn't know a singular individual.
There's a recent example that came up on ANOS, a survey that came back from, from students, and there was concerns. We worked with the building administration, and worked with that, that team to provide more opportunities and spaces for students to share, to try to figure out a way to, to make that connection, and move that forward.
Thank you.
Any other feedback or questions on 520? Moving on to 522. Again, there's not a lot of changes here. This has recently been updated with the current Title IX protocols, so, besides some minor edits on titles and adding the legal and cross-references, there's not significant amount of changes here.
Emily, on 4C, I know we talked about this, but I see our name actually mentioned in here. And then before that, Jim, your predecessor. We had asked, and I'm assuming that in the second review, you found out that a name had to be in this one? That was the fact?
Yes. This is one that we're statutory required, required to have it in policy.
Right.
Great question, any other questions or feedback for 522? Moving on, then, I believe we're at 525. Any questions or edits, suggestions for 525?
I have one question. When we get to requirements, so it's the second page. It's under, there's responsibilities and requirements. And it says, "All users," it's the third paragraph. "All users, including employees, independent contractors, students, parents, and legal guardians, and designated volunteers, may be provided an individual identified password and login for authorized areas of the district website and internet." Right now, parents do not have Google Doc logins, and so anything that requires a Google Doc login, parents do not have a login for.
This may be provided, doesn't say will be provided. So this covers all those circumstances, correct? I, yeah, I believe so, I, I don't know if I can speak directly to the Google logins. But this policy would allow for them to be provided, or not to be provided? Any other questions or, or concerns, edits?
Well, it kind of goes into the next paragraph on the next page, where it says, "All teachers shall make classroom information available to parents and legal guardians via the website and internet, which the parents can access because they don't have a Google login." So I'm on the next page, where it goes to, um, it's paragraph on, "So, 'All teachers shall make classroom information available to parents and legal guardians via the website and the internet system, and such information shall be updated at least weekly.' But again, parents can't access it because they don't have a login."
Can they get one, can they ask for one, or can they?
It's a procedural thing in how you share that information. And if it's shared from your Google Drive, and it's a Google Doc, and, and parents don't have a login, that's not going to be available to them. So it'd be a procedural thing in how teachers and staff share out that information in a format that is accessible.
Whether that be the learning platform, or changing the.
Or the file type.
Yeah.
So anything right now that I have to click on a Google link, I cannot access. If the teacher posted it as a PDF, I can see it, but I have two classes right now that I can't see my students, correct, because it's in a Google Doc.
Just curious, like, in communication with that teacher, like.
You didn't even realize that I can't access it?
Did she provide it before you went asked?
She said no?
No, she didn't say no, but, I mean, like, we haven't gotten, this is, like, real recent, as you know.
Right, right.
So, I mean.
So, so we're.
Actually, to be honest with you, I just logged in under my son's login, because I didn't go through the whole process of having her, asking a teacher do extra work right now, is not really fair, considering their situation with the contract. Because she'd have to create a PDF versus having it on her Google Drive.
So, Marks, you might correct in assuming that if she would just change it to say viewer for all, then it would be fine?
Yeah, we'd have to dig into the sharing rights as well.
I don't know that that changes anything in this policy.
Right. The word may is the key there.
Sounds like it's a procedural situation. And I think that we still want to leave it that, "All teachers shall make classroom information available."
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I think the policy is still okay, and we just have to deal with that.
The procedural aspect of it.
So any other questions or feedback on policy 525?
Um, the only other thing is, we say compliance with other school district policies and regulations. So we're saying, basically, use of the website and the internet. Should we be listing those other policies below this? Like, our internet policy, and?
Tech uses policy.
Yeah, all of those policies that go in, it's like five-something.
So, I believe it talks about that, not limiting to school district policies on non-discrimination, harassment, violence, and electronic policies acceptable use. But, so you're asking, have the cross-references to those?
On the bottom, yeah, I think it would be a good idea, so people know.
There's a suggestion that was definitely missed.
Yeah, that's good.
Any other questions or suggestions for this policy? I suppose too, we can legal, we can do some cross references to FERF and others too. Okay. 525 dot 1.
This is an update, I didn't, I, hold on, I gotta look online. Was there an update thing, or uploaded?
I'm uploading online.
No.
I have the update. Do you have one? And then reading it? The update was, I had a mess under general statement, um, number 2A5. We had some internal comments going back and forth that I forgot to delete. So, what was on the original, that was in purple, that said possible addition, something regarding, ignore that purple, and it's the recommended pink. Schools may establish, um, non-digital zones for non-digital activity to promote interpersonal skills, reduce distractions, and foster a focused learning environment. That was the only change that was uploaded today. Any questions or feedback for this policy? Okay. Moving on to 5.6.
The only other question I had is, do we need a link to our cyberbullying policy? Because we're talking about cell phones, so there is a cyberbullying policy somewhere in here.
Are you on 525?
Well, I was on 525.1, and I'm wondering if we need a link on the bottom to the cyberbullying policy? Because we are talking about cell phones. Or maybe is it just the use, um, we say, "Compliance with other district policies, use of cellular phones or other personal electronics must not violate any other district policies, including those regarding student privacy, copyright, cheating, plagiarism, civility, student code of conduct, electronic technologies acceptable, use of harassment."
So I'll cross, cross references to school district policies at the bottom.
Yeah, and then also the cyberbullying. Like, the cell, cell phones and cyberbullying go hand in hand.
Anything else for 525 dot 1?
No.
Okay. 526. Okay. 531, memorials. 531, memorials. 609, religion.
This is the only one that has the Lemon versus Kurtzman listed, but so does MSBA because I double-checked it. So maybe just check and see Coach Kennedy versus Brahman Supreme Court case recently overturned the precedence of this case. And then, but we do also say the U.S. Constitution Amendment one, because we're listed first, which is ultimately what the Supreme Court case was decided upon.
I'll definitely check the legal on that.
Yeah.
Any other feedback on this policy? Questions, concerns? 622, graduations. Really have too much here, we just want to make sure we're inclusive of all staff. So that was really the only change for this policy. Last but not least, 722. This had a lot of changes.
Yeah, can you just give us more context to all the changes?
Yeah, some loading online. Did everybody get access to this?
It was in the packet, I mean, I got it.
It's giving me a loading error. Did everyone else get access to it?
Yeah, reload your board dash at the main.
So quite a bit was changed on this again for MSBA policy with quite a bit of changes in statutes since the last time we had reviewed this policy. So adding quite a bit of edits here. Again, the colors do not mean anything, it's just whoever was in the document making the edits, whether it was somebody adding pink or green, just was determined by that. And then adding the cross-references and legal references to it as well.
My only question was under the costs for public data. And the language we use is a little different than the language that's actually used in the law. And I did a cross-reference to see if this is what MSBA uses or if this is specific to our district. But my question is, is why wouldn't we just reference exactly what's listed in the statute in this 13.03?
Which part are you under, can I consider?
I'm under costs, so it's way deep in the policy. It's basically just defining what the costs are if somebody were to do a data request. And the wording, like I said, is just slightly different than what's listed in the actual statute. So I'm just curious why we would.
Oh, under seven, request for data by a cost?
Yeah, five, six, seven, eight, actually costs, public data. School district charge for copies provided as follows. And like I said, I guess I can look up what MSBA does. But I was just curious, like I said, it's slightly different than what's listed in the actual statute. I was just wondering why we wouldn't just take it right off statute.
I can definitely double-check that, and if there's any substantial differences that changes the intent, I'll bring that forward for the next meeting. Any other questions or edits, suggestions?
I mean, it's just simpler to read. As long as it's correct.
Again, this is another one where we have to list a name in here, so that's why there is something listed in there. I know we talked about not having titles and stuff, but we do need to list that. Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
A lot. Thank you.
Already had it.
Okay, so superintendent relations, anything? Okay, informational items. The only informational item that I have is the, we posted our first executive committee meeting for Monday, January 29th, and the topic is to discuss board retreats for 2024. And then anybody else have any informational items that they want to share? Okay, then future agenda topics. Does anyone have any future agenda topics that they would like to have discussed? Or open up for a potential item on a future study session?
I'd just like to know when we're going to bring back to the discussion the advanced math programs, the sixth and seventh grade advanced math programs. We talked about bringing that back to a study session. And I had several people approach me at an event this weekend asking about that. So I'd just like to know when it's going to come back. As we talked about it at our, we talked about it at our board meeting, that it would come to a study session.
To be, I'm going to turn to Dr. Edwards. Is that already planned, or do we need to look at a future date?
I think we need to look at a future date, yep.
So I'm going to ask for, does everyone want that on a future study session? Anybody thumbs?
I'm fine with it.
Are you still there more details?
If there's questions, is it, I mean, is there anybody that doesn't want it? I think that's the easier way to get a clear answer.
So was the ask for a deeper understanding?
Yeah.
And clarification on the decision that we don't have?
At our last board meeting, Dr. Edwards gave us more information about the program. And I asked the question, are the two classes going away? And he answered very clearly that yes, they were going away. I also know there's a community member who started a petition. I don't know if we've sent a response back to that, her, the email that she sent in. So it's very pending. And so that, after Dr. Thomas gave his, Dr. Edwards gave his answer, I believe Board Chair France, who said, "Let's bring that back to a study session." And we all agreed that it would go back to a study session.
I did not say let's bring it back. I said the topic that came up during the administrator notes was leading into an agenda item. And if needed, we could bring that back to a study session. I didn't say let's, I said we could. And it's my impression that the parenting question was met with. But I wasn't sure if there was, if there's?
Yes, one, one parent was met with, and that had inquired was not related to an incoming fifth grade student. It was related to a younger child.
So, and that was, was that equivalent to the same petition and question and things like that? Is what my understanding was, I just want to be clear. I'm not trying to betray confidences here, I'm just trying to be clear.
Yeah, there's some energy around that. One of my asks would be, has that landed at the building level for clarification?
Okay.
That would always be my ask of.
That makes sense.
My, my ask of the board, if this is something that you want, what are you looking for? That he didn't explain. And I know it was halted because it wasn't a topic, but what exactly, what more clarity does the board want to understand about the process that's in play moving forward?
That's kind of what I'm trying to understand. With everything that's on our plate for the rest of this year, was there something that was still unclear to the board? That we need something with, is it specific to? I'm not sure. So that's why I'm asking for a thumbs up, to bring the topic back and what aspect about the topic would need to be brought back.
That's the question I had.
I mean, I'll be re-clear. I was in the curriculum meeting, and then I sat and listened to when we voted on the math path. And it, maybe I'm just, wasn't paying attention, but it wasn't clear to me that the sixth grade math and the seventh grade advanced math classes were going away. And so that is, to me, that's a big change in our, in our advanced math offerings. And so I would like to see it back, to come back for more understanding of how do we support those students that, I mean, I guess the question is, is there any option for it not to go away? I mean, that's where, that's where it is, that's where I thought it could come back to the board. Is, and to have a discussion of, keeping those advanced math classes? Or, or is it just, we just go forward with what was, we approved and move forward? Or do we have to technically rescind the vote? I have no, you know, I'm just, I'm not sure.
I had a clear understanding in our meeting of what the pathways were. So I'm comfortable with it as is.
I felt like your explanation at the board made me, helped me understand what was going on. I am, I'm comfortable with it the way that it, without it coming back to discussion. Because I don't think it, I don't, is it, it's not a, it's already been decided, right?
Yes, it was presented to the teaching and learning advisory and by teacher representatives from the middle school and the high school in the November meeting, and then it was brought to the board in the course, new course proposals in December.
And you, and you're saying you were clear, because maybe you've been here for four years, and you looked at the piece of paper and saw that the sixth grade and the seventh grade advanced math options were missing, so you would know that. And I'm just saying, when we talked about the math pathway, I never, it was never said directly that we will be getting rid of the sixth grade advanced class and seventh grade advanced math classes. And that's a big concern to our community. So that's why I, I think it's, I think it should come back for more conversation.
Yeah, and I guess I felt it was addressed, but I mean, if I'll record and we go back and watch, I felt it was addressed. I understood it, but I mean, we are different people and have different understandings, so that's totally.
I mean, the reality is, as we said right now, he's, Dr. Edwards is saying, we're not going to have sixth grade advanced math, and we're not going to have seventh grade advanced math, and the parents will have to go through.
We already have seventh grade next year, because sixth graders have been identified this year. Two years out, because there won't be a group that's been identified in sixth grade.
But the fifth graders, those parents coming in, those hundred that are in that sixth grade advanced math potentially, will have to go through that policy 513 in order to be placed into advanced math.
We don't have, we have one class that's getting sixth grade math this year, that's the Sage student in fifth grade.
I thought you said we had sixth.
That's currently what we have in sixth grade.
Sixth grade advanced math, we have one class?
No.
So can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah, now we're into it.
Can we, I mean?
Sorry, I think it just needs to, we're going to come back. If we don't come back, that's fine, then it needs to be explained to the community.
What, okay, so this is what I'm hearing. The majority of the board has stated that they are, I think we've heard.
They're understanding it, okay.
Dr. Rolstead?
I, I do understand it as it's, as what we voted on.
Okay.
Or what we voted on.
Yeah, I thought I heard you, but I'm sorry if I.
I do think from our board meeting a couple of weeks ago, there, we talked about having a communication go out to families, which I haven't seen yet. And I think that would be useful and helpful. And so I think if, if that happens, I think, but in addition to that, I understood that the pathways is presented from the teachers and the committees and what we voted on. But I do think there's a communication that needs to go out.
So I, so I'm hearing that, that a whole board session on this is not, is not warranted or not the will of the board as the majority of the board that we have here. And if there are additional questions or concerns that, and I believe you, you also mentioned that they were talking about this at the middle school?
That night.
That night, too. So if there are additional questions, I think the correct pathway would be for those individual parents or board members who still have questions or concerns to actually ask the middle school department, teachers, and then you if necessary.
And principals.
And principals, right? Is that, is that a fair?
Yeah, that's clear. That helps me, I was just trying to understand what it is you would all need, but now I understand the will, and now I understand, if you need additional questions answered, clarity, we can sit down one to one.
And you're saying that the parent who emailed in has been communicated with? Because I did not see any communication go back to that parent.
They were communicated with the first time, and then the communication's the second time. I am looking for direction.
Yeah, I, I do believe if, and I have to compare which parent we're talking about. So I would want to do that.
Okay. And by the way, I am personally uncomfortable mentioning individual parents or anything like that at this table that does, that is not appropriate. And it's already started, but so just want to make sure that we don't do it again. Is there any, are there any other issues or questions people, I mean, are there any other items that people would like to suggest?
I have a question, when do we get to have an update on FastBridge? When is that timing?
12.
What's that?
It's on the agenda, it's on the master agenda, too, on the plan, on the website. I'm not sure if it was this one or next one, but it's next one. Okay, with that, we are going to adjourn the study session and transition to a closed meeting. So let's just stay at this table, take a quick break, and then clear the room, and then shut the doors.